United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Why?
Yax.
Yes.
Johnston, Brumman, Brady.
Did you see, here, presentation?
Small.
I accept the motion to approve minutes from April 16th. So move the second in, any comments? All's in favor?
Aye.
All the quorum, motion carries. I'd like to add to the agenda on our new business, Deputy Treasurer position and the teaser project for the sheriff that he presented last meeting. It's not as tough in the finance, but not till finance.
Do you want to add that now, the election budget?
If you'd like to.
Or do you want to do it at finance?
Let's do it at finance.
Okay.
With that being said, oh, public comment, my bad, three minutes per person. I know we had one online public comment, but I don't look like they have blocked it.
And he was, he was, uh, he basically was wanting a cherry capital, basically an update. He was going to speak, he just wanted to be over here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other public comment?
Do you want to add?
It's already on here.
Thank you, Darren.
That being said, we'll start with our presentations, Kathy from number one.
Hello. So you have in your packets, um.
Kathy, you want this?
Yeah, this is very good. Um, it has come to my attention from our State 911 Committee that, um, first off, every 911 piece app has to have an emergency telephone service plan on file with the state. The plan basically says, this is how our 911 center operates, this is what happens should we lose connectivity or something, who's going to pick up our 911 calls, who we service, just a rundown of what we're about. They have a new employee at the state who's been going through all the files, making sure everybody has everything on record correctly. And we do have a plan, it wasn't a completed plan, but we have a plan on file, but it was never signed. So she sent me what she had and I went through some of the files from the old director and I found it. And, um, yes, it's not been signed. I had Stephanie and Trina searching through secret vaults and stuff looking for this, never been signed. I did find a resolution and they found in the commissioners meeting notes from May of 2016, um, that was voted on and approved. I found the signed resolution for it, but still it has not been signed. So I need it to get signed, that's why I'm here. Um, you should all have a copy of it, it looks exactly how it was when it was first voted on, um, except I fixed some, some filling and stuff, but there's also appendix on the end, there's four of them, that were mentioned in the body of the document that were never finished. Um, I found the notes on what they were supposed to be, I finished them, they're all in your packets. And I would like to look at getting it signed so I can get it on file with the state, so. Yeah.
Is it just the, um, I'm trying to find packet, is it, the whole plan needs signed or just the resolution?
It's the whole, the resolution is signed, it's the actual plan that needs to be signed. So in there, it, the signatures for the chairperson and the county clerk.
With the plan in place, I would move to approve the plan as submitted and authorize the chair and chair to sign.
Move to the seconded, any discussion? Robert, roll call this one.
Who was the second, I'm sorry?
Terry.
Terry? Brady?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Yax.
Yes.
Small.
Yes.
Brumman?
Motion carries.
Alright, thank you.
This is, will you hear mine?
It's a plan. This, this is a quick one also, Carolyn asked if I bring this. So, um, there is an app called What Three Words that you can put on your phone, so if you're out hiking or somewhere and you need emergency services, but you don't know where you're at, you can pull this app up and it will give you three words and this is, uh, it's, goes all over the place. Europe has it, I think Australia has it, where it gives you three words that'll pinpoint your location instead of using like longitude, latitude. So in this, we can also send you a link from 911 for you to send us your three words if you're having an emergency and you don't know where you're at. And we found it's helpful in rural places because a lot of people don't, you know, they're hiking, I don't know where I might buy this tree and this tree. So if you get your three words and you send them to dispatch or give them to us, we can plug in those three words and it'll coordinate your position right where you're at. Um, it's really a neat app, but PFN, our fiber network, has made these signs up so we can get them out. They're really nice signs, put like trailheads, I thought maybe the marina, anywhere where people might go out, um, especially tourists who aren't familiar with the area, where we could post these, they can scan the QR code, get the app, and then they have it in case there's an emergency. Um, right now I have five, but I can get as many as we need. So I'm looking for suggestions on places I could go to try to hang these. So if anybody has suggestions or has an idea of where it'd be a good spot.
I don't think, yesterday I lost my list club, those many.
Yeah, I have that on my, somebody mentioned it after, I have that on my list. So if anybody has any ideas of where, you know, should we email or make a call and, you know.
We'll give you some, I think, the Parks and Rec meeting, just for the walking chat out there.
Okay.
Other spots.
Okay.
Yeah, another long chat, Hubbard Lake.
Oh, that's a good one, yeah, that one's on the list either. That's good, especially out in water, people don't know where they're, how do you give the location and the link? So I'll get a bunch of them and then I'll give you some and we'll get them out there then.
State Park.
Yeah, State Park, I think the Forest Service, I think Kiffen is working with them, but I'm going to give them a call and ask them as well.
It's absolutely amazing.
Yeah.
You got your phone?
Yeah, all, all the lakes where they can throw in a boat and, you know.
So how does, what's the, what's the?
Go up, go, put, go up and put that on your app, on your phone. So you can scan the QR code, you can also look in your app store and just look for the What Three Words app. And you sign up for your account, I think it just asks for your, your email. And, and, um, so then you'll have this app and like Scott Race was playing with it, he said after our 911 meeting, around his yard, and it changes, the three words change, so it could say like, blue bald dog. And that's, so those are the three words that you give to 911, and it seems ridiculous, but it works. You can also text 911 San Juan so we can send you a link that will get your three words for us and we'll be able to find where you're at. So it's cool, it's really cool app, um, we're trying to get it out more, it's, it's very new. They've used it other places, um, and they've had great success with it. So, um, like I said, if anybody else has an idea where to put more signs, I'll get some more from PFN and we'll get them out there.
Thanks.
Yeah, absolutely.
Next up, Danny Goff to your building department.
Hi, everybody, um, we gave each a packet, um, and this is basically giving you a four month review of what's going on in the building department. Well, as you can see, uh, the number of permits so far issued in the first four months are down compared to 23 and 24. Um, it's kind of been slow, but it's really started to pick up the last week and a half. Um, the kind of amazing number, if you look at the one paragraph there, even with 2023 having 77 more permits issued, we have increased amount of revenue of $11,950. So, you know, um, we're doing okay there. On the back of it, you know, we're, we're down compared to 2024, 2024 was a really good year really. Um, but, um, we've, uh, with our just the storage inspection fees, I'm confident that we're going to be done by the end of the year. But this just gives you kind of the idea of where we're at, uh, for the first four months. Um, the second page, the second piece of paper is, is just giving you, you guys, a idea of what happened with your solar system permits. You know, we found out, Harry and I last week went down to the code officials conference in Mount Pleasant and then talked to a lot of inspectors, a lot of things going on down there. And we found that we really weren't, we were issued permits for residential solar, but we really weren't following up what we should have been doing, um, getting manufacturer specs and, and, you know, installation instructions up front. I mean, these guys are coming from Florida, Texas, all over the places, so, you know, and, uh, so we, we talked to a bunch of different counties and we came up with this, that we put on the website already, that what we're really looking for before, um, solar permits, residential are issued, what the contractor, the supplier's going to have to issue to us. And we're going to be planning to view them, um, so our inspector knows what to look for, where he goes into these houses, whether the battery backup, however they're wired in and that. And, you know, we're finding out that, uh, let's say they want to put a solar in for residential, but they want to go to a car charger in their garage for electric cars. That changes the whole gamut of wire and everything, so. So anyway, we've put this in and it really is information for you guys. Um, so if anybody does actually question, we're talking about these departments, they're well needed, we follow the guidelines. And then, um, the last page is what we found out for our building department to do any kind of inspections at the schools, um, the, the State of Michigan had this form that needed to be filled out, we've never done that before. We pulled, found this form, we pulled it up, um, we have filled our, our, our building department, it's over at the school district right now, um, getting filled out, the head of the school board's got to sign it, and then we need Adam to sign it, and then we have to send it back to the state. The state's going to take whatever time it has before it comes back. And, uh, the school, we just received a set of plans for the school, they're going to do some remodeling in the, in the elementary school. So I'd just like the permission for Adam to sign this, we'll give it back to the school board. That's, that's what's on there. And then, um, a couple of weeks ago, I, uh, met with the personnel committee and the finance committee regarding our, our contractor, our inspector's contracts, and as you guys know, we all had copies of them. Um, you know, our plumbing and, uh, building official, building inspector's contracts hadn't been updated since 2010. Our electrical was 2017, so I worked with Tom Michael. We've updated the contracts, uh, we put some consideration in there to try to bring our inspectors up more in line with other counties. And I'm looking for you guys' approval to approve those contracts as I'm presenting to you guys. That's what I have.
Alright. Um. Yeah, I'm going to add those two things in the review. I don't think that's going anywhere, right? I mean, what we, what are you going to do? I would just wonder what, what changed on the school thing, guys, they didn't want to do it, now they do.
What's that?
Uh, the school inspections?
No, it's, you've got a state requirement.
I mean, for us to do it.
Yeah, this form had to be filled out and approved by the state before we could ever do it. Had nothing to do, right, is what we had to do.
So we were, we were not doing it.
Right.
And, and I remember I was talking to Harry about it a while back and we don't want to get into that, we'll let the state do it.
Yeah, well.
So we, they want to.
Yeah, but we found out that this is the way, I mean, Duncan Gilman from Alpena said, no, no, this is what you got to do, you guys, so. You know, we've, uh.
So then, then instead of the school getting state inspectors to come up and look, now our inspectors can go look.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And it, it's a, it's, it's good for the schools and it's too good for our guys too, you know, and it's really an requirement from the state. The state really doesn't want to do it, you know.
Good to do right now, it's good to do.
I'll make a motion to approve updated plans for the inspectors.
Can I try to?
Support.
We're supported, any discussion? Roll call.
Small.
Yeah.
Johnston.
Yes.
Brady.
Yes.
Brumman.
Yes.
Yax.
Yes.
Then a motion to, um.
Do that even though we don't have it yet, or?
What?
Sign that after the school department.
Well, the school is, the school, they're just waiting, Dan McConner's finished with it, they're waiting for the, for the president of the school board to sign it, and then it's going to come back to us, and then it's got to go to the state, which could take 10 days, two weeks, and they'll know. So I would like, as soon as we get it back to the building department, to get it to Adam and let him sign it, not wait for the next meeting.
A motion, Terry?
Yes.
Very much so. I'll support the signature of the, uh, delegation of school planner view and inspection authority to look into the government, of course. Moved in seconded by Dave, any more discussion? And, you know, I mean, we still have to follow the state's guidelines on planning reviews for schools.
Oh, yeah.
Nothing changes.
Not to change, it just allows us to do it. And then, like I said, the sort of plans came into the day for little remodeling and they're talking.
So timeliness will be better for people because the state is like months up.
Yeah. And Adam might have all the three time directives that you need to sign.
Okay. Roll call.
Brumman.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Brady.
Yes.
Yax.
Yes.
Small.
Yeah, just, uh, you can give those to Stephanie if you'd like.
Dan, I think I've got copies of them already.
You got copies of them already?
Yeah, and then I.
Keep those copies.
And I got them, I'll have them signed, yeah, and then I'll get copies from your box.
Okay.
Okay.
Awesome. Scott Race, sir, give us update.
Good afternoon, it's actually an emergency management update.
My bad.
Okay, we can work through it. As everybody knows, we had the ice storm five weeks ago, we did an emergency declaration, um, a lot of work handled it. And at the end, two weeks ago, we had a Zoom meeting with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. And out of that, all 12 of the northern Michigan counties that had an emergency declaration, each one of those counties is going to get three generators donated by the MEDC. They're going to be tri-fuel, so they're on gasoline, propane, or, or, uh, natural gas. They can only be used for health and safety reasons, so that limits where they can go. Um, we cannot use it for day-to-day operations, so last week when the county building was out of power, we can't use it to have normal operations. So where's it going to go, or where could it go? It could go to churches, um, where we might set up shelters, or township halls, again shelters, uh, service centers, uh, senior centers, they gave suggestions, but it's not for everyday use. They're coming from Home Depot, you can order 15 of them at a time, is what they're going to be, that's true. And, uh, it's a Westin House brand, it's got a 15,000 startup and a 12,000 continuous running, they've heavily discounted them 25% for us, so we're getting about $2,400, $2,500 per generator. And then the cost of the generator is $2,025, and the other $375 will be for extension cords, gas cans, gas cards, so that when we put them into use, they're ready to go.
So what does it look like, you're going to give us a grant, get, put a fund together, and then we make the purchases, or are they?
Nope.
Right, so buying the things, just dropping off?
MEDC is going to buy them directly.
Okay.
And then we will be the benefit in the end, if we're three generators and lots of 15. So, um. That was two weeks ago, uh, we got the application filled out and, um, I got Adam's signature on it, and they sent it, they sent, we got it back to them, they acknowledged it, and, um, we're just waiting to hear next, what's the next step, as to where we go or what we do, and, um, go from there. Most of the township halls have generators, not all, but most. And we're going to have to get out everybody that gets a generator. Um, my phone blew up last Friday from private citizens wanting to know where they can get their three generators. Well, a friend of mine told me that his wife heard on the news that you guys have generators in, in grants, and I want to get my name on the list, and I said, it doesn't quite work that way. Well, MEDC hasn't put out a press release yet, so I did some digging and searching, it took me a while, I found it on the Detroit newspaper website. So we're up here, they're down there, figure it out, but anyways, um, has to be a brick and mortar building, can't be a P O box, and it cannot be a, uh, private residence. They want the business name, tax ID, they want at least two points of contact, physical address, um, what business, what are they, what are they going to provide to the community? So one of the examples they gave on the webinar, or not the webinar, but the Zoom meeting was a bar. And I could see everybody's face on the screen going, what? Well, what does a bar have, restaurant, commercial kitchen, large coolers, large freezers. So rather than be closed and all that food's a waste, get a generator, get them powered up, now they can serve food to the community, those that need it, based on the situation of what's going on. That was an example that actually has occurred somewhere else in Michigan. So I think through, um, the L A P C and the L A P T, I think we're going to have to vet this out and figure out where these thirty generators are going to go. Um, they got to find their warranty on them, but if we put fuel in it, they're ready to run.
Did they? That was easy.
Did you hear from EMA on their visit?
We have not, they asked for some more information, we provided that information, they requested. Um, haven't heard back yet, and we don't know when the MEDC or when the generators are expected to, to come online, or when we can start getting them. But as soon as I know, I'll let you know.
Alright. Well, thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Next up, Cherry Capital Update, Tim and Justin.
Yeah. Buddy? Um, it's kind of, I got the packet. It's the latest, um, status report from Cherry Capital from May 14th. It starts to talk about what our application is like, what the percentages are, and coverage. Unfortunately, the map gets attached to it. I haven't, alright, like the machine can do color, so, we're having, we better make Tim be able to explain that. I can go over this file, I'll let Tim do it because of this DVD. He also is going to do a, um, more like a PowerPoint presentation, and we had a chance to do this, follow along. Also, in the pamphlet, just to catch up on something we talked about, the last thing about grant writing, they are now ready to release in showstones. The press release is going out to the papers, so they'll be, this is even bigger, but it does outline what's going on, how that effort took place, and, uh, the success of companies, I think people in this county that, that, wanting to know more about how to effectively attack them there. So that should also be helpful. I had shared with you the other day the actual status report from Cherry. I just wanted to know before I get out of the way here, um, did you have any specific questions about that?
No. Basically, you know, the big question is, uh, you know, when does the money start falling, and what's the timeline for that?
Okay, well, let, we'll take it as a bigger picture then, and we'll start from the top, uh, rather than being specific. Okay, yeah. Justin, Justin came with me today, he's, uh, during the presentation had questions. I can't answer, Justin can. One expectation is that, uh, this is still just a progress report. The application has gone in, uh, it's being reviewed, and, uh, but no award has been made. And in the current environment at the federal level, uh, there's a lot of uncertainty. You know, they've given the state of Michigan some extra time, but nobody really knows, uh, where we're at. Our, our hope is that round one will move quickly and the money get out there. Uh, for the process, they got 392 applications from up to 41 providers. There's only 41 approved organizations that could bid, uh, or make application. Uh, I don't know which ones of the 41 actually did it. Um, hopefully within a month or so, we'll know. Uh, there was 55,000 homes or locations not included, nobody's been on. Uh, whether that's rural Michigan or the population centers, I'm unclear. I would tend to believe the rural areas were ignored because there's not as much return on the investment. And many of those 41 institutions were, uh, equity type firms, and so they would take higher population areas in order to, uh, you know, get a better return. There is, if you Google M I H I and say B and status around one, it'll take you to the site where if you want to look at the contract, it's a 140-page contract, they've sent us to review. And there's other opportunities for you to get some feedback on that contract, um, by May 22nd. I'm not quite sure why they're sending that to the public, but comment on the contract, other than that's just within the NTIA rules. Uh, but we're, we received our copy a couple of days ago. Doesn't mean we won't, won't anything, we had six applications in, um, across the knuckles, and one in the U P. What was most difficult in trying to make a decision what to do across all of our applications was they were making changes all the way up to March 3rd. So we didn't know where the locations were, we didn't know where the hex guns were. Uh, there was a lot of unknowns associated with it. Uh, March 3rd, they put, uh, a stake in the ground, and even from a location perspective, they did what was called a halo, little yellow, uh, reflection around the pin. And those may or may not be included. So we were trying to create a business model, identify our risk, uh, and not know whether or not, if we picked a thousand locations, how many of those would actually be funded? And so it was, uh, quite a challenge in the last 30 days to go through our business models, create different scenarios, and try to count the halo pins, and the halos, uh, there was no file that they gave us. We had to go onto a website to kind of count them, to try to determine, uh, where that risk was. Uh, interesting, we've never, I've never been involved, uh, in an application process that wasn't firm rules that stayed in effect for years, you know, it was, uh, there was changes being made all the way up to the last minute. There was one announcement we were waiting on that came in, I think, on April 4th, and the deadline was April 9th. So, uh, but the good news is, uh, we feel we did really well on points. As we did our self-pointing, we were around 65, 68 on a hundred point system. And that's primarily because we build to the standard the state was looking for for scalability and resilience. Uh, it's called XGS pond, it's 10 gig, uh, essentially to every home, which is more than speed wires uh, that people will need for years to come. Uh, so because of those points, uh, and our service levels, uh, we think we will score high and therefore be at the top of the list when it comes to, when we did our Robin application, we were the 10th highest scoring application of about, of about 200 applications that went in for Robin. So we're comfortable that our velocity kind of matches what Michigan rates as we go forward. Timeline, we, the state of Michigan has till August of 2025, uh, to finalize the. But the state, uh, the feds, uh, just last week gave them an extra 30 days. So when we made application, it was unclear to us when construction would start. I would love it to start in August, uh, rather than in the middle of winter. But, uh, so when we submitted our timeline to the state, we just put a stake in the ground and said it's going to be January 1st, 2026. If it's earlier, great, if it's later, uh, we'll adjust. Uh, we made a 41, was there a 41-month commitment? To get to 200 miles of fiber in the ground, passing really an unknown number of households, because we don't know. really an unknown number of households, because we don't know what the final number is. Our best guess is what we published, which I think is nineteen hundred and sixty-six homes. The project is a fixed cost project. That means if it's under, we gain a little bit. If it's over, it's up to us to fill in the gap. So we want a medium project price. So a little over fifteen million dollars is what the project's gonna cost. We asked for eleven point five million from the state. This works out to be about seventy-five hundred hours. A house, which is on the low end of construction cost, which is good. They give, gave us points. And works out to be about fifty-eight hundred hours a home funded. So there's homes passed and there's homes funded. So those are really excellent numbers compared to the industry. Cherry Capital has to come up with the, we had to prove we could come up with the three point eight million as match amount, the difference between the project cost and what we're asking the state. And then we also had to deposit three point eight million in the bank and just let it sit there, collecting interest for the duration of the project, that if we fail, the state gets that money back. So that was quite unusual, though we had to do both the match and the line of credit, irrevocable line of credit. The effort to get letters of support, Doug did a, of all of our projects, we had sixty-seven letters of support. In Alcona, we had seventy-six, so it was from every township, every government official. I think, you know, every, it was, it was, it was, it was a great, it was a great indication of Alcona's commitment, which was important, to get up to, I think, six points, if you look at it. With our Sioux tribe commitment up in the U P, they have three hundred and thirty-two members that live in the general area of Alcona. And so the chairman of the board, Mr. Lowell, signed a letter of support. And then we also got a letter of support from Sioux tribe's E D C for the project. And so that gave us a couple of extra points on the application. Even though their service areas, the U P, they have members in every county in the state of Michigan. So they have fifty-one thousand members. So they're fairly, they're fourth largest tribe. So that's why that's important. And their whole funding mechanism is to make the community where their members live the best it can be, whether it's on their tribal lands or in those counties that they service. They're very, they're a very broad thinking tribe, which makes it enjoyable for, for us to work with them. Five to ten percent of the total value of the project is gonna go to minority companies that we deal with, that take care of some engineering, take care of some small items within a project, but that gave us another three points. So point-wise, we were kind of happy with it. So everything was based on hexes. I'm sorry, staying anyway. Hexes were six mile, I think, across, eight miles across. But? Three miles across? Okay. If there was a river in the way, a railroad track in the way, and one home, and it took, you know, twenty miles to get around to get that one home, if it's in that hex, I had to build it. So hex made it very difficult. You also could not create what was called island. You couldn't skip an area in the middle and not have a way to get to it for somebody else. That was called an island. And so contiguous, contiguous delivery of it, plus having a roadway to get there, was a balancing act. It was, it ended up being a hundred and ninety-five square miles and a hundred and ninety-eight actual rough miles. Pretty close. That number was unusual. This map will, once we're awarded, will provide that link over on the left-hand side, and so you can put it to your website. And that will allow consumers to put in their address and see if they're within that hex. Of the nineteen hundred and sixty-six homes.
Yeah, maybe it's the next slide.
So this is by township. I do want to mention that fifty-five locations ended up being in Ascot, a township, which is not in your county, but it was part of a hex split. And we chose to add that in, rather than ignore that couple of miles that was in Alcona, plus some in Ascot, a township. Hexes didn't care about township boundaries. They didn't care about county boundaries. They didn't care about any geographical. It was just a mismatch of hexes. A hundred and fifty-six of the locations that was given as a number had no match to any federal database called the fabric. So we have to discover those hundred and fifty-six. I'm sure they're out there. We know what we do have a match on. We don't have a GPS coordinate. We just know it's within that three-mile hex. And so as we build, we'll discover them, and they may not exist. If they aren't, if they don't exist, then we'll get funds removed from our, our bid. But it unfortunately does not hit every township. But it does hit fifty-six percent of the eligible locations that were, were identified. And so what we're trying to do is make sure that we could get the greatest number of locations in need. And I think we only passed three hundred and thirty-five homes that didn't have an internet option. So it shows high concentration of high need. And I do want to remind everybody, this is round one. There's another round that comes up. There's also a negotiation. During the negotiation of this, the state could say, hey, nobody else did Alcona, which I doubt it, Frontier probably did. We want you to take this area. And if we want the contract, we'll take those areas. But now we're, we're pleased with what we were able to accomplish with kind of a moving target and come out with some numbers. I know politically, this can be a little sensitive because it doesn't touch every township. I just, we just could not figure out how to make it financially work. This we could with the, with the ratios that we had to maintain.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It touched a little bit on islands and railroads.
Yeah, so. So when we first did the hexes, there were some islands here, which means these four hexes, let's say, you know, and these three hexes, we ignored because there were just one or two homes within the project. And the assumption is, if we got a project, those two or three homes really skewed the numbers. It brought our production cost higher without any benefit from a points perspective. And so we had islands when we first did it, and we were able to go up higher, and we were able to come down this way. When we had to add the islands back in, which are just basically areas that are surrounded by hexes, but left unserved. Yeah, we would, the, the application would have been thrown out. We're not allowed to, to apply without them. So we had to shrink the project to take advantage of it. Now, obviously, if nobody bid down in this area and the state adds us, asks us to do it, great. Yeah, we'll do it. By them asking us to do it, we don't have to put up the irrevocable line of credit for those homes, and we don't have to show the match. If we accept it, then they'll accept the numbers as we have them. So we're hoping during negotiations, you know, we can add millions more project, but not be burdened by some of the regulatory side of it. That kind of explain it. I, I've never seen this method before in all the state and federal programs we participated in, but it was unusual. Oh, railroads, yeah. The other thing we stayed away from was railroads because of the timeline. Sometimes a railroad can delay us for two or three years to get under. So we tried to stay away from the railroad that ran up this way. Yeah, being concerned that we wouldn't be able to meet our forty-one-month commitment for those areas. Again, that's an area that the state can tell us to take. And now I'm not burdened by the forty-one month. I won't be penalized if I take it. And so railroad crossings are, even though the state changed the rules last year, they're still very difficult to get, to get under. Just, they're politically very strong lobbying organization. It's their land, and if you gotta go under it, it's still their land, no matter how deep you go. What, how, how does this benefit the average homeowner? The numbers I have in my database shows that Alcona has a poverty level of fifteen percent and an ALIS level below ALIS, which is working for a thirty-two percent. If consumers are in that category and have some benefits that they, or support they get from the state, there's no database to tell me who that is, because A C P is gone now. But if the state provides us with a tool to identify that you fit in this category, then service will be twenty-eight dollars a month. And that's a hundred-by-hundred service. So that was worth twenty-five points on the application. We felt, since we're asking the state for seventy-five percent of the money, that for that kind of population density, we could absorb, you're not making much money on it from a return on investment standpoint, at twenty-eight dollars a month, but it's not a loser. It's just right at the margin of where you'd want to be. Everything we do is a free install. So the router and everything else is provided as part of our normal practice anyway. Internet, they also wanted a one gig service on the high end for, they wanted sixty-eight dollars. We couldn't quite justify that. So we were able to financially justify eighty dollars a month. Our current one gig is a hundred and twenty-four dollars. Again, the state's putting in seventy-five percent of the money, so that reduces my capital risk. And we felt eighty dollars a month was viable. So we decided, since we're so close, we would just do a sixty, seventy, eighty-dollar service plan, make it easy for two hundred and fifty, five hundred and a gig service. So those are very competitive rates. Again, free install. We hope the consumer responds to it. There's still more to get done. We assume that next month, it's supposed, it's supposed to be by May ninth, but I doubt they will. They're supposed to release the list of applicants, applications, and where the areas are that those applications are for, so we can start working on round two. You have to go through a preregistration process to bid on anything with the state of Michigan. Since we already did that for round one, we're automatically allowed to bid on round two. It takes about seventy-five to eighty days to go through that preregistration. And so if you're not in, if you're not registered today, you're probably not gonna make the timeline for round two. So we'll wait for that and then re-strategize what we do in Alcona County. We anticipate shortly after that list comes out, that will be notified of the award. They're not gonna publish the award until basically have signed the contract. They're not gonna risk. They did that with Robin and a couple of providers. They were announced that they got Robin, and then they backed out of it. So they're gonna make sure they got signed contracts before they announce the award. I hope that that's before August. I'm hoping that they allow us to start round one before round two is awarded. The original N T I A rules was they couldn't start any construction until one hundred percent of the households were, were addressed and cared for. With the timeframe that there is, that's not possible. And so we're hoping the N T I A new director allows them to move quickly. And let's get this three-year project, four-year project going, because another four years. That's an eight-year program, which is quite lengthy. People want broadband. There'll be negotiations with us to remove and increase location numbers. So we'll see what happens there. Once we're through that process, we'll start consumer outreach. And then we'll work on round two, and then we'll continue to work on what's called Dig One Policy. The future funding is going to, once everybody's on fiber and symmetrical, they're gonna start funding to overbuild spectrum coax. So there's still a lot more in the state, because spectrum coax is not gonna take, take the state to the future where they need to be. Because it's just not capable of doing what fiber does. So that'll be the next battle in the courts, funding opportunity there after B is successful. So we'll see where it goes. So that was it. There's a high level. Then we have any questions?
So we scored sixty-three out of a hundred?
Yeah.
Estimated sixty-three to sixty-eight. Is that good?
Yes.
What is great, that's seventy.
It's, if we were a union, we would have got another eight points. If we were, if we are ourselves a women-owned or minority-owned company, we would have got more points. There's a few things that I just can't meet. Yeah, that, that, it's that typically you don't get a hundred points. That's almost impossible. The goal was you had to have at least thirty-seven points to be eligible. Thirty-seven or forty-seven, forty-four, forty-seven points passed. So, which means that most would be able to make that, otherwise why apply? So I've never experienced a hundred-point win on something.
Yeah, with all the labor we've done over the last couple of years, too, you would think that helped a lot.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, no, they, the level of support from Alcona for it was significantly reflected in the application. We published the application itself, but we're waiting to find out. Because one of the things that the ninety-day delay also implied was because more than likely, the current administration will pull out the union rule, they'll pull out certain things. They may even pull out the twenty-eight dollar or the low income or, or price setting. They're really opposed to price setting, which the other party was pro. We're hoping that those rules, if they change, don't require the application to be resubmitted. That would be disastrous. So we don't want to publish our application, make it public until we know that, you know, it's moving on to the next round. you know, it's moving on to the next round. Anyway, sorry. Any other question?
I I really want to thank you for.
Now, we're looking forward to serving the community for a long time and will continue to invest in as we go forward. This is just a start.
Doug was saying you said we had a hundred percent participation with all the townships?
Um, yeah, I was, uh, you have to say. That's phenomenal. So what do you get? A big shout out, thank you goes out to all the units of government in the county. There's thirteen of them, you can see villages and townships. And to everyone and to the benefit of the work we all did and they all did. We had every township supervisor, every treasurer, every clerk at least. And then a lot of trustees filling in their good measure. So as he said, they don't see that kind of support at a county level. So everybody deserves a bit of credit for that. That is a big performance and it helped a lot. And as you can see, the story here has a crazy, they're out of this world. But so that's what we meant when we said everybody that's gonna help. And so pass that along to, and I think we'll probably do some sort of a letter goes out to everybody to let some know that and say thanks for that. And as you can see, we're on a long road. And so support has to sustain itself in that regard. So just that, I mean, it was sort of unprecedented. And I asked somebody today, a veteran of being commissioner in the county, had they received any kind of support between the two, the county and the townships? And could we follow it, I guess?
It says a lot to the town. We work in a lot of counties, the knuckles all over Canada, and it's unusual. You know, even to get township support. Many townships are argumentative and, you know, not all counties work as smoothly as you do. That really helps, you know, me do my job. And then having Doug spearhead a lot of the local board were extremely helpful.
It, I think it shows you the thirst for this, to be successful. And, you know, don't get, don't get swayed too much by sixty-seven percent of a hundred or looking at the chart where where they will get first traction. And we'll tell you this about the counties that Tim's working, whether it's Ross Common or Benzie or some of the others, they've already been through their first go-around with Robin. So they've built that foundation that we just started to build here. And so we're a little bit behind from that, but only because this isn't what the first step looks like. So as an example, again, the Sioux tribe, and I don't mean to harp on them, they're just really great to work with. And they are really good at raising money. But like any government, it's very difficult. They have video syntheses to say, at least. But they just presented, they have ten million dollars sitting in an account. And they just presented to us last week on how they could help us build down in these areas, Alcona included. And there's a CF. I'm not gonna say it right, CFBI, CFBI. Anyway, there's a category that has money attached to it that they can use that money for. And so the management company for the Sioux tribe's money approached us as to how they could infuse money into this region through those programs that requires the tribe to do it. It has to flow through them. So we're, yeah, I mean, that that that's a reflection of the the community here and the community north, how everybody works together. You know, bringing that together, it's it's kind of exciting to see that happen. Well, today showed the fluidity of this situation. Remember, we're still in a competition. Nothing's been decided yet, but all we can do is put our best foot forward and I think we've been able to do that. Just the message is the first step's been taken. We don't know. Should know in sixty days, ninety days. Will be as prepared as we can to start engineering and shovels in the ground. We'd like, you know, the sooner we can start that, the better. The good news is the winters here versus the UP are a lot different. So there's a much and Michigan's terrible for winter.
I was gonna say, sometimes it's worse.
Sometimes, yeah. But, you know, we'll we'll do everything we can to get as many feet done as quickly as possible, but yeah, I I don't wanna set an expectation that we're starting tomorrow or, you know, that we've got it. We don't wanna do a community outreach until we're really sure where we're at. And then we'll go around to all the townships, we'll try to find private groups who can present in front of but really get the consumer engaged at the point that we know we have something we can, you know, provide them a timeline and and a schedule to. People, they tend to be anxious when they hear something. They expected yesterday and that's difficult to do like any, you know, major construction project. And we will keep you informed as quickly as we can. So we're kind of right on top of that part of it. So patience. Thank you very much.
I really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Make sure if anybody, maybe your constituents ask you, you know, what's going on, I'll go and refer this recording. The years on actual date. Moving on to new business, some sort of claims.
Pre-authorized claims and open claims presented for payment between April sixteenth, the two thousand twenty-five and May sixth, the two thousand twenty-five for check numbers one five seven, two six seven, one five seven, four three five and E checks, two six one five to two six two eight for a grand total of five hundred and eighty-five thousand, eighty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Second, me. Any discussion? Roll call.
Small.
Yes.
Brumman. Johnson.
Yes.
Brady.
Yes.
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 Next up is the AccurSure proposal. Well, there's two things that I have numbered. I have to look it up, but there's two things when you talk to AccurSure, they provide us support for updating our opioid handbook as a one-off project. And they also have services to be able to, I would go through our policies and procedures to get us up to speed with the current, a lot of all these things. So Stephanie, do you have the cost of that? What it was for the?
Thirty-five hundred?
I think the second one was, that's a two, that was a two-day free consultation. They come in and they they talk to us, ask a lot of questions, they go back, they come back and kind of tell us what areas we used. That was free charge, but. I don't know that we need to hurry up and go on that. You haven't booked yet or?
We were trying to reach out. Did you get an answer yet?
No, I just reached out and Sonia, I thought I sent her. She sent me the name of a gentleman that is part of that's the township that has been driving. Contacted him, but he has nothing responding.
Do we ask for references and they didn't provide any governmental references?
All we had was nonprofits.
Right.
We didn't have any government. And so that was what Sonia, she said she had to get authorization from the entity itself. She always sent me one. She always sent me that.
So the other question is, you know, really before we decide to go ahead with that one off, the handbook is maybe we should have some other, better quotes. I'm asking the board if that's your appetite or how do we wanna proceed with this? Do we need to hurry up and jump on a handbook right now or something that we start to? Probably, you know.
You know, the price was less than what we anticipated. If we'd always, and the last one we did was sixteen fifteen, I think, remember? It was sixteen hundred dollars.
That sounds familiar. Can you go by, remember that?
So and at that time, we were just, it's kind of a house thing. We did a lot of the work ourselves. So this seemed to be pretty reasonable, where they're gonna do everything. But I'm not opposed to going out for another one. We pursued this one because Trina, she had gotten the contact from them.
Put it this way, it would be irresponsible probably if we didn't have a couple other boards considered.
Especially since we don't have any supplemental recommendations.
Would you wanna re-quote the whole thing and send it out for bits and give them an opportunity to, because they were doing it as a straight quote, if they knew they were in a competitive situation, maybe that would change a little?
Dude, we can make them aware.
I mean, is do a request for proposals?
We have to identify some companies to ask, just put in paper, nobody's gonna write on it. So maybe it's let personnel drive for another month maybe or so and figure out some other.
Put together a request for proposals and send out three of them and see them. And I think it'd be fair to let them re-rebuild, re-did it.
But I would like, I would like to make a motion to allow personnel to proceed with I'll make motion to that. Move a second, is any board discussion? This is just a motion, just to be official about it. All in favor? Most carries. So personnel will proceed with accusations with AccurSure and try to set up some get that consultation done. In the meantime, we'll, personnel will also pursue trying to identify some other potential suppliers for the handbook. Just don't let it go. Moving on, equalization budget amendment. We had another not employee request some vacation coverage. I'm sorry, cash out some vacation time, PTO. They had plenty in their bank to do it. So with that being said, I would have to make a motion to transfer from fund balance one thousand five hundred sixty-six dollars to line it in one oh one, two fifty-seven, seven twenty-five, zero zero zero.
And if the last one didn't get resolved, so there's a total of two thousand eighty-two, seventy-five.
What I should have said was, hey Cheryl, remember when I asked you to put that together and I forgot I asked you to do that? I apologize. So what Cheryl said, two thousand?
Two thousand eighty-two dollars and seventy-five cents. It would be a change of twenty-eighty-three for rounding purposes. Yes.
That's my motion.
I'll support it.
Move the second discussion. If I hear any discussion? Do roll call.
Brumman.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Small. Yes.
Yes.
Brady.
Yes. Next, we'll do that with finance. And all the the thing with chair. Next is opioid committee requests.
I'd like to invite the sheriff, people here for the presentation. We have, if you have questions for him or whatever. This would be a data managing system that would allow our medical investigators to determine the amount of, and which items of drugs are in and of deceased victims' body. It's correctly under state. This is not my lawsuit.
Yeah, I understand. I understood a little bit different. It doesn't really analyze what's in their body, but it gives them an ability to better better assess the scene that they're on and and get real-time information in and out from the scene to help determine the cause and manner of death. Specifically, they're talking in terms of opioid overdoses, but I think these these tablets can be used at all deaths, so they can communicate back to the the actual doctor, the medical examiner himself about what's going on. And currently what's going on, it sounded like was the big problem is these people are bringing out their own own devices, whether it's a phone or a camera or computer to assess these scenes. And some of the information that's gathered with these devices is is sensitive in nature. And they're looking to get around that. There's also some real-time reporting. You need to go to the state and federal agencies to oversee opioid deaths specifically to track those deaths. So really, the the big thing I saw was that there's there's some privacy concerns and some some sensitive information concerns associated with them using their own devices in this video that specifically when they're taking pictures of death scenes. The the cost of it is nothing outstanding. It looks like opioid committee has plenty of money to do that. Some of the concerns that I had about it pipe up here in just a minute about it is that these these devices will be owned and maintained by the county with them paying for the user agreements with with their contract. With that said, with any devices, there's issues that come up from time to time. And sometimes time to time, it's not the most especially with that. So that 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 may be a concern that to look at in the future, but another concern I had, you may have, is that we're giving these devices out to the medical examiner group. Well, actually, these these medical examiners that come to the scenes, the scene investigators are subcontractors of Alcona County. They don't work for the medical examiner. They do work for the medical examiner as a private contractor, but they're actually employees of Alcona County or subcontractors of Alcona County. This equipment, when given to them, will be returned to Alcona County when this is done.
This comes to you from the opioid committee with the recommendation of request for you to please.
If you wonder what I'm doing here, I showed up for an opioid committee meeting and nice to meet you. Yeah, not only did I show up to watch, but I got to do it, so thank you.
What kind of device are you talking about?
Tablets. Yeah. Yeah, and and the big the big thing is communicating with their database based on the data and they're able to research what So I was one of those, it's our stops, who's gonna fix it when breaks? And who's the insurance will be ours? So are we gonna have? We're gonna handle the medical responders. They're gonna sign off because it's 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 tech. So they assign to use it, to have it, they have to follow our policy on.
I would assume that the IT director would wanna.
Yeah, we're gonna have to get all that done before they get one. It's not gonna be able to get into our system, right? It'll be standalone.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, none of them are county employees that have county details or anything like that. I think they all have their own.
So these will be on their personal, so keep them.
Other questions?
There's no other questions. I would move to the request from the opioid committee regarding apples or the medical examiner.
I'll say.
So how do you wanna develop policy for their using it? Do you want us to do it separately or we'll do it on our own or? You know, as far as.
We'll work with MMEG.
I just don't want one of those tablets to show up in there or get involved in something it shouldn't be involved in. And it's like a county tablet. There needs to be some stuff on it that I'm sure we don't get.
pulled into a situation, cause this could be sitting in somebody's house and could be used, I don't know, I mean, I don't know how they're gonna lock it out, if it's only gonna be able to be used for not, or is it gonna be?
We'll work on that.
Yeah, they, they got some of these devices out being used in other persons.
Yeah, they lack it.
We'll look at it, see what their, their policies are.
Hey, Leo. Um, yeah, roll call. Well, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Most carries.
Thank you.
Next up, better than fair service for your grant.
Yeah, it, it's your spending mind, so you need a, a roll call.
Oh. Roll call then, please.
Yax.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Small.
Yes.
Brumman.
Yes.
Brady.
Yes. Craig.
Would you like to present the better than fair service? I called you right out, but they do.
Um, yeah, so Tony sent me this, that they're to go, this is not edge in stone yet, this is simply a proposal. Uh, so the grant that we've gotten, I think for four years, he's highlighted, uh, what they would like to spend on, now this is specifically year twenty-six, so this is not anything this year, it'll be next year.
Start from that.
Yeah. So, um, this is the beginning steps. This is their, the board went over this, Tony's gone over this, the things they need, and this is what they're gonna request, the state will have the final, or the C V, whatever their CBS, CBSF committee will make the final determination. This may not work, and then I have to readjust and change some things around, but this is their initial, um, proposal.
I would move to approve the, um, better than fair service grant request and authorize chairs.
First quarter, any counter questions? Does he roll call? We don't have it.
Tony, can you talk?
So, I just give you a little quick, I know you would ask a little bit, he just had appointments today, so he wasn't able to, but where they're at on the pavilion, they have some concrete, the four flights put up, hopefully wrapping everything up, I think, I assume.
Modification to the mail, email and the mailing address for myself is not really, it's one fifty, if you can pick that fix.
On the front page?
Yeah.
See Frank said, what, what, it's not your email, but?
It's not my mailing address, Q box one.
Oh.
Sometimes takes a while to get mail from other department. It's not mailed.
Tony, can you hear me?
The moral service. I, I did not, I didn't bring it up at the last meeting, so I.
Yeah, it was your last one.
Yeah, it was over there, and I'm assuming they're gonna contribute it there, but they were kind of putting together with the building open house, so. I like it here, and I'm just, it's, it's, I guess, I know they wanna be there, but.
Definitely, we have a, uh, motion by, forgot. motion by Carolyn, supported by. Wasn't we? Craig, supported by Craig to, uh, approve the application for the better. Right. Is that a roll call or a?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, most carries. Go ahead, uh, part of reading the position of, uh, second deputy treasurer, should have received that information yesterday. I would make a motion to approve, um. Who that?
Support.
Who is supported? Any discussion?
I would ask that before we did that, we rescind our motion in June about the other person. Politely and assuredly remove your motion.
Yeah.
And I would make a motion to rescind the motion in December to.
So. Or, yeah, okay, who is supported? Rescind the decision last year. Will this, that previously discussed? Okay, any more discussion? Roll call. So that, this motion, so what I said was, never happened, we did a time travel. We got a first thing I'd do before we can make a motion to approve the new position is to rescind last year's motion for the, what we tried to call it the first time.
Okay.
And if you need extra notes on that, I could talk to you after we do.
Okay.
Um, so that's the motion on the table right now. Is to rescind our previous.
Did you say roll call?
Roll call, please.
Brady.
Yes.
Small.
Yeah.
Yax.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Brumman. Yes.
Then, I would like to proceed with the approval as presented by the deputy, uh, treasurer position.
I will support.
Who is supported? Any discussion? Any discussion? Man, and we'll, I just, we'll do a roll call.
Yax.
Yes.
Johnston.
No.
Small.
No.
Brady.
Yes.
Brumman.
Yes.
Next is, last meeting, the sheriff presented us with the TASER project. Um, should have had enough time to review the provided information. Oh, Scott, Scott, there he is, your guy, right there. Scott, if I remember right, that was a, that was. It's a better perspective, and there's nothing to say about. Uh, it was broken out into years, right?
Was.
Yeah, okay. So do you want approval just for the first years?
I, I've actually budgeted enough for this year anticipating that, um, we work on this deal.
So what precisely do you need from us?
Well, I, I actually need, uh, approval and a signature, signed a five-year agreement.
Got it.
Cause I do not, I do not have budget approval for the next four years.
So I will make the, of motion as discussed by Scott about the TASER project, and then seconded by Terry. Questions, comments, feel free to. Hearing none, uh, roll call.
Brumman.
Yes.
Johnson.
Uh, yes.
Yax.
Yes.
Small.
Yes.
Brady.
Yes. That's it, three business. Moving into finance.
Um. Uh, if I may, I'd like to move to approve the contracts for the building officials and authorize the chair to sign.
Can you do it?
I already did it.
Yeah.
We did it.
They, he said, he put it on new business, but then, once Dan pre- presented, they just did it right that in there. Okay, I'm sorry.
Thanks for looking though, I appreciate that. It never hurts to have a second set eye. Uh, anyway, so finance report, um, we're able to meet this morning and schedule conflicts, uh, get to figure out a decent way to carry on forward with, uh, regular meetings on the day of questionnaires. Right now, it's after meeting, which is not really reliable and variable, but it's like too, right now. Uh, that being said, um, a couple of things have to happen. Cheryl, I asked you for one of the things, if you could present that for me right now, with the, um, Scott's vehicle, the sheriff's department.
I have an email right here. There was thirty-five hundred dollars that was originally budgeted, um, and somehow through the course of budget time, it didn't, it got overlooked, it was reduced, um, and that there is thirty-one ninety-one that was stung out, and there was thirty-five hundred that was requested to be moved into capital outlet for vehicles and a, uh, general number one oh one three oh one nine seventy, zero zero zero, and that would increase that, um, from forty-eight.
You don't have to have the exact.
It would be an increase, uh, brought in from fund balance, increasing the fund balance, the transfer from fund balance by thirty-five hundred dollars.
That's all right.
And increasing the bottom line, the overall budget by thirty-five hundred, revenue and expenditures to cover those costs that were originally changed.
I would like to make a motion to do that.
Uh, general call?
Um, fund balance. Second, who would second it? Any discussion? As Cheryl stated, we're moving around with numbers, um, you know, Scott was diligent and provided us what he needed. Somewhere we got lost in translation, so this will make a hole for that, uh, purchase you want to do.
It's just a bit of the fund balance.
One of the things, I'm not saying that, um, there will be new stuff, but. This is where we're at, so, oh, what did we, Gordon, I don't remember.
I did.
Roll call.
Yax.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Brumman.
Yes.
Brady.
Yes.
Small.
Yes. Next item is clerk's office, um, election cost, you wanna give us a little rundown on that?
Sure. Um, I, I just honestly don't know what happened to my election budget at the beginning of the year, it wasn't right from the get-go, it's like I got it blocked off and attached it and sent it off, um, but I was waiting for these spectrum, uh, that's our ballot printers, and I just received that bill on Monday. Um, I told Cheryl yesterday I'd try to get something together for it to present today, because one of these includes an annual contract fee, uh, that I, that's been due since the first of the year, so I'd like to get what, I had four outstanding, uh, election bills that I need to get paid as soon as possible. Um, so the total amount that I'm requesting the perfect budget for the, all of the amendments is the six thousand six hundred and seventy dollars. Of that roughly just over three thousand dollars is reimbursable by the school, and also, um, eleven hundred dollars of that sixty-seven, sixty-six seventy was already budgeted for. It was in the budget, um, so it, it roughly equals out to be about two thousand dollars that I'm, I am, it's gonna have to come out of the fund balance. And that's my request, if you guys can approve what I submitted to you guys today. Did you budget for the refund, the reimbursement? In here?
Three thousand, yeah.
Not in here, not in this part of my request. Is, would that be right here, under refund reimbursements? No.
It'd be in the income side.
Coming in, yeah.
Yeah.
Not one oh one, no, I didn't have.
We can, we can make that change now too, right?
Yes.
So how much you expect me to do that a lot? Just grab, just hit chat.
Thirty-three.
Okay, so let's say we're gonna get thirty-three hundred, so we wanna increase line item for, uh, in income by thirty-three hundred. Make that change, whatever that item's gonna be, whatever the line is, and then we wanna transfer the balance, then thirty-three. Twenty-one, eleven hundred already.
We can reduce the transfer from fund balance, um, if there is any contingency, um, by the three thousand, so we don't have to change a lot of line for that one.
I make motion to do whatever that is. However, that works out on paper.
I'll support.
So I understand we're transferring from contingencies to money, so.
There are no contingencies, but there are other places that funding can be raised.
Budget from that point, yeah.
So we wouldn't end, we would end up reducing what we are, what we, what we're bringing in to one of the fund balance, because we're getting more money in, so we don't need to bring another three thousand in from fund balance, because we're already bringing it in, it just wasn't originally budgeted for it. And that way, the expenditures cannot be offered that way as well, depending on how much they will add to revenue reimbursement with the updates.
Do they have a second?
Yes.
Uh, roll call.
Brumman.
Yes.
Small.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Brady.
Yes.
Yax.
Yes.
Um, Cheryl, is there, well, I like doing your credit report, because finance unfortunately was not present for his, you know? I was gonna ask questions about the audit last week, but, cause I wasn't here, I was just like, Cheryl, just.
They weren't either.
Oh. There you go.
Did they have?
It was a lovely exit interview you guys missed. This one, they're supposed to schedule one when they have an opportunity this week.
Okay. All right. All right, well, we're on the first one. Um, Craig, uh, he wants to be with us right after.
Yeah.
So, that's why I, so, but other than that, um, look, your report really, for me, something new, okay? Credit report.
My chief, with all the power, just from the audit, um, we, we gained, we found out that they were, the first time, the first communication was they would be here, they would not be here Monday for Wednesday, and they would be here for a six weeks. Um, and say, uh, not seeing anyone or hearing from anyone, they were fully remote, um, obviously that was okay, because we didn't have power. But they, um, luckily, the sheriff department allowed them to hook up to their generator and allowed for them to remove it. And they have, um, they collected their data, I don't, I didn't even wear a contact, I'm sure they were in contact sending things to them, their questions and things, and we haven't, I have not heard back, I did have a conversation asking, requesting an exit interview. Uh, the auditor, the main auditor that was working with us had, um, was going onsite for another audit, and she was leading it up to Ken, who I had not heard back from yet. So the majority of the time was working on that, that, though, that information for the auditors, so we'll, I'll update you as soon as I hear that from them. The deadline for that ARPA reporting has been submitted, and all of our obligations, we still have a timeframe, and there are a few questions, a few of the payments that remain out of the ARPA funding. Uh, there's a few errors that were done, um, as far as, there's a double payment out of, for somebody's computer. And there was, it wasn't brought to my attention to be corrected by prior to looking through the December information. And, and waiting for the information to be presented, and I got the information on the input, and I spoke to the auditors about it, and I haven't heard back from them on how to correct that. Um, it, the expenses were reported appropriately on the report and to the auditors, and I'm just kinda waiting for feedback on how to handle that in our general ledger, so that's just one little thing, um. Other than that, we have been, we had a meeting with the S and A, and the township treasurers, and we met few new deputies, and they had a good presentation in regards to the information on the cloud-based programs, which they are obviously pushing to go forward, and then also the payment plan, or the pay, payment program that they have through the S and A work taxes, which is a pretty comprehensive program through the across the county, and it gives the taxpayer a lot more options and a little more ease in as far as making payments, which may be beneficial, and we're looking into that, considering it for the tax payments for the future. Take about probably thirty to sixty days to start it up, that was presented to all the township, and we are looking into it, we encourage everyone to do it, because the amount of tax dollars that come in, and the ease of people who live out of town and have secondary homes and humming cans and that kind of thing up here is phenomenal. And it, the availability of the people. And it, the availability of the people that are working from the township treasurer's offices are not a hundred percent fair um modified. Such as we are, uh it would be a benefit to the townships and I encourage them all to look into doing next. Something either the alt aid or whatever we have now, um but this BSNA program um is a bit more comprehensive and a bit. It would likely help for them a lot, had they chose to go that way, I know some of them were excited about it, talking about it. And working and not moving forward with it, so. That's really all I have, does anybody have any questions for me? And landing. Conversation that was cut short because of the commissioner meeting, we've got a half hour and it was about it.
What was your, I heard, just gave an F over, what was your feeling on it?
Uh so I'd like to see the replay and.
It is recorded, I missed the first part, it's gonna be recorded, we can watch it all then.
I'm hoping.
Yeah. Okay, what's your report?
Uh last night we had an election where the two school renewals uh passed um. We got the results in and they were up on the website by like. Eight forty, townships came in, the normal pick ups, we were out of here by about twenty after ten, so that wasn't, that wasn't too bad. Um canvassers will meet tomorrow to finalize the results, make them official. Tomorrow at nine AM. I have a few things here, EverSure, so Trina and I had a Zoom meeting with them. Where they asked a lot of questions, um the breakdown of things that they offer. Um we were on there for about an hour with them, which apparently is the information that they're going to need for the meeting that I didn't know that you were having on the third yet.
I know, I did meet at thirty two. Is that the one for their?
Yes, yeah, uh we did learn a lot of stuff with them and I did wanna let you know that that proposal is good for today. They sent it till today's meeting, okay?
Oh, for the uh handbook, handbook.
I think Trina said she had to request them to extend it to this meeting today. Cause it was good from fifteen days from April eighteen. So it was only good for fifteen days.
What time is that meeting on the thirty?
Uh Trina just mentioned it, so I gotta check with her. Um some of the things that came out of that meeting. Some things I thought if we, if we choose to go with them after you get your RFPs or whatever. Um they had a couple of things that I thought were great that you guys might wanna look into further if you're happy with the services they do provide and we have money. Um but they have, one of the biggest things they said that they do studies on are exempt versus non-exempt employees, so it's kind of an issue. Everywhere uh because we might think we know who they are. Based off of our policy handbook, but their legal team reviews who is exempt and non-exempt. Um another one is they also offer wage and salary surveys. That are run so all over the board, that that might be uh job classifications, that hasn't been done, I don't believe in. Uh it's in, in over twenty years, I think it was two thousand and one, it was so uh. And Team Ranger headed that up, so it's been like twenty four years since job classifications, I'm sure our jobs have changed since then. Um Bob Halt from M N R M A actually realized and I kept wanting to look to see if maybe he just missed it. But now the trial court has a gun policy, a weapons policy, um but it doesn't appear he said it's not in our. Policy. I I I didn't go back in and look real well, but um he brought that to our attention and the ESTA, the Earn Sit Time Act. Um another thing they also provide is when the question comes up of the, I think we've. Got it covered pretty good, W two versus ninety nine also, so there were just some, some neat things that, that they provided. And um like I said, if you're happy with the seruc, it's maybe something that we wanna look to further down in the future. Um also, um. Scott is no longer able to do our background checks, um so. There's been some hires where there have not been background checks done, um you, Scott, I believe, Trina found out you use iChat?
Yes.
Okay, so EverSure provided as a freebie, uh the five top used companies in the state of Michigan. Which we're gonna have to like. New treasurer to office position, do a background check, so we're gonna have to pay for that now. Um well, cause Scott Stevenson is no longer able to do those out of lean, so um. We're getting quotes from the four or five trees, got one more she's gotta meet with online. And there's all kinds of different ones, so when we get all those, I'll bring them to personnel and see what you guys want to do. Because you can go from a ten dollar search to a fifty dollar search as far as if you want the credit checks and. National criminal searches, civil searches, just their driving records, so there's quite a few to choose from. Um building department closure, the policy doesn't seem to be working. That's in place right now, um. Trina created a building department and elected official and it's a mass text, if there is. No water, no power, I don't think Scott cares if our power is out. It doesn't, it have anything to do with the road conditions, so I don't know how you guys wanna handle it, but in the meantime, until there is a policy that is in place. That actually works, it is a mass text that will go out to all the department heads and the elected officials. And the attorneys, the lawsuit, MacRae is still and up in the air. And in the Court of Appeals and. We basically just got a letter from the attorneys, it's nothing to go on a closed session, they've just given us kind of a. They said at least be done in sixty days probably before we hear anything, but again, it looks like um. They have a final brief that needs to be filed on April twenty sixth, but which has come and gone, but I think they have sixty days after that. And then we'll know if we're gonna have to be going, somebody from the county level. But uh back on the big city report. And. That's it.
Okay, thank you very much, any questions for Stephanie? Alright, uh Scott, Sheriff's report. Brief explanation for the background investigation, we, we cannot, never have been able to do. Lean checks or criminal history checks on people, if I've done a, if I've done a background check for any of the agencies in the county, it's been a local record check. It's never been a criminal history check, that's not the way we do it, never has been. Um but I have done background checks for local records to check to see if they're that, if they're local for all different agencies here. So that's that explanation, it's something, uh it's something new that came up recently, the odd thing is, is the uh. Fire chiefs can come in and get criminal history checks, volunteer fire chiefs can get checks on uh their employees for firemen. Uh remarkably EMS director cannot do the same for his staff, which is uh, this makes no sense at all to me. Um matter of fact, I thought that was wrong and our review voted at once and I, I lost, but that happens sometimes, so. Um so my report, some of the things going on recently, uh the, the victim services had their conference in Lansing. And uh we sent three people to that, they need quite a bit of their training, they require twelve hours of training every year to keep their certification on that. And they just kinda keep up on our other V S U butchers things that are going on in their world. Uh like I said, we had three people at that, it was pretty well attended, I tried to sign up to go down for one day on that, it's. Already, so there's no room for a lowly sheriff from Memphis, Michigan lieutenant. Um we had the hunt board meeting on the twenty fifth also, I'm pretty sure Small attended that with me. Uh it was rather contentious meeting, I would say. Um the serious issue in Vanthorpe, you know, people on the hunting, um we are a major part of that problem. We haven't had a person in the team in ten years that I know was probably closer to twelve, uh we have a memorandum of understanding with them and we'll provide one of those. We haven't, they've been gracious about that for quite some time, but we're not the only ones that aren't supplying a person. I, quite honestly, the future of the team is, is in jeopardy right now, because there's nobody to vote to it. My issue is very similar to what's going on in Mount Brantley issue, can't staff a road patrol, we can't have these extras and that's where we're at. And I think that's stated clearly enough, but my priority with extra people, the school resource officer, I'm not. Um that's, that's not a nice to have anymore, that's a have to have, you can't go without that, so.
New commander taking two areas.
Yeah, yeah, sure, pen area, that's uh, it's a good point, um the state police, like everybody else, is short of people, so what they've been doing for quite some time. Is they've been staffing one, one lieutenant for us and for saying, which is a straight area narcotic team. Um we had our lieutenant retired, Steve Sharp retired recently and they are, again, they're gonna replace him with one person to cover both teams. I, I, I took exception to that with uh the captain from the state police, I don't think that's right, uh that we're sharing. Um but also I'm in a, in a position of disadvantage, arguably, since I haven't provided a person with a team in over ten years, uh maybe closer to twelve. So uh we, we're having a special meeting on June sixth, I don't know what's gonna happen at that meeting, I think the future of hunt is on the line. Um I think a few things are shaking, so that maybe Alpena City's gonna be able to provide somebody. Uh cause they just lost a person off of the team back to the road patrol, but it's, it's in serious jeopardy, there's not enough people to operate that team safely. And they don't want our money, I mean, we can send money up there with any butts in the seat, they don't need, they don't need our money anymore. And, and I think quite a few years ago, and, and maybe Carol remembers better than I do, um well, because I wasn't in this position when Carol was in her position. But um when, when agencies weren't available to uh or able to send a person to the team, they would, they would often send money. About that, and that's where everybody's at now, is sending money and no, no officers, so, uh but again, until I can get my staff up to a reasonable level. Uh to where I wrote, wrote patrol and services, call for services here, I can't send anybody on. And uh the sheriff, the sheriff of Mount Brantley County, he's in a safe position, and um. Our steel's in pretty good shape, Alpena City and Alpena County, and I live here and, you know, they, they sometimes have somebody on the team, sometimes don't. I just quit setback.
Scott, was that problem with the funds from local?
Has not been yet, but I, I'm assured by the um, by the sheriff and, and the prosecutors in Alpena County that we'll be taking care of in one form or another. And uh I, I missed the date of, of that special meeting that they were going to have, but um. They, they were gonna have a special meeting to try to, try to reappropriate that uh with the board commissioners, and it, it's gonna happen one way or another, I know. Uh no worry about that.
The, it sounded like the state was even hesitant about putting men.
Yeah, they, they, they absolutely are, they're hesitant on putting more, more resources into it if our locals, if the locals won't. See, these teams, these teams are kinda centered around the state police, but they're organized by the local units of government. And here, that's, that's me and Mr. Michael, and if we can't contribute to it, why should they, that, and that's their position. And um you know, they provide a lieutenant and a sergeant to that team and, and sometimes a person. And um that's always been on the team for quite some time, and you know, there's been some locals coming and going from the team, there's been nobody, nobody on there. From, from locals for quite some time regularly, they've all just been coming and going, and as staffing surges come out. Uh just, just like we did about a decade ago, everybody pulls their person back to roll and go, they answer calls for services, so fun calls. So Monday I went to something that was pretty cool, I've never been to, they had a law enforcement marginal service down at the Capitol Building on the, on the steps. Uh the, the Michigan Sheriff's Association Board of Directors were at that, our executive director was a keynote speaker, so we went there and represented. I was not up on my, my, my military steps and protocol, uh but I, I winged it and did okay, and I think I blended in with everybody. But uh my marginal was probably a bit off, it wasn't, it wasn't quite where I should have been. Anyways, we honored five fallen officers that uh that died in Michigan in twenty twenty four, which included two sheriffs deputies. Uh one of them was from Alpena County, one from Oakland County, and uh I, you know, to do this play wide, I don't get too choked out though, but the deputy from Oakland County. Um had a couple of children, one of which wasn't born, but he died, so. We stuck around, um by the way, next week is police week, Carol knows that, she's been keeping me all aware of it for quite some time, but next week is police week, so remind uh. Remind you to say something to the police officers when we bump into, if we're in like that, if you can. Uh yeah, we stuck around the next day, which was yesterday, and Sheriff's Association Board of Directors called that a legislation day. When we went around and talked to several senators and state reps around, around the Capitol Building and the grounds. Yeah, we talked about things that affect sheriffs, I mean, we weren't there talking about safety tanks or any of the other things that you guys are concerned about, we talked about sheriff's issues and funding and staffing and, and how it is so. We talked about some laws that affect us in the public justice system, and it, it was a pretty productive day. The neat thing that I found out, the first uh, the first representative we talked to had a place here in Alpena County in, in Hersnell, and I didn't know it, so I was. Rather embarrassed by that, I'm not gonna tell you who, because I don't know what she wants me to do at a public meeting, but um I did invite her to a lunch at the entries at some time, so. Yeah, and she's very high open. Yeah, this morning, the school, the schools brought a class to uh, to the sheriff's office and jail for a visit, they visited our facility, they visited nine one one. Uh Kathy gave a nice uh, nice tour, um then we brought them over to the courthouse and they watched court session for sometime this morning in District Four. And they finally talked to them and talked about things going on in the court system, so it's, it's quite nice to see how school brings that group up every year. Uh Mr. Hinckley teaches a government class and, and incorporates us in that, I asked some real pertinent questions as far as rights and things like that. Students, and I got some answers, you know, which was nice to hear, we don't always get that. Um but they knew, they knew that they had certain rights when they were arrested and what they were, and sometimes what they weren't. Uh also, some interesting questions about how to smuggle things into the jail, but uh. Nothing that embarrassed me too much anyways, I've heard it all before. And hey, oh yeah, I'm sorry, yesterday and today we're going to fire out qualifications for handguns and, and uh rifles, not shotguns as time around. But um that's going on right now, we should be qualifying. Or uh sergeant, please, we may disqualify you from service, which. Would be trouble on that. Um I guess some areas concerned out here, and, and these are kinda things that we've all been kicking down the, kicking down the road here for some time. Uh my, my staffing is absolutely a bit horrible, I mean, I'm running ten officers when we just started, ran with uh fourteen. Um. Well, one time I had, I had ten jailers, I had uh two crooks, another clerk, and I had a total of twenty seven full time people. One time, I'm down to twelve, I'm down to twelve, you know, and I, I'm not complaining, but everybody else is growing and we're shrinking. And this, I don't think, I don't think public safety is where we need to be shrinking, so we've been kicking this down the road a little bit. My guys worked five and a half weeks of overtime last, last year, and if you remember right, they're working eighty four hours of paid period, so we're talking about seven weeks of. Of time that they work on top of where everybody else works. So they're, they're working a lot, we're stressing the crap out of them, this, this is not good, we're gonna, we're gonna push them to the point where they're not, not performing optimally, they're gonna be making mistakes. And things aren't gonna be going well, so we gotta look at, at um, and building back up our staff. And, and Sheriff Brady, I appreciate you coming over, talking to me the other day about some of the staffing issues, uh and I'd be glad to keep working on those with you. The jail, historically, we had nine corrections, two cooks and a secretary to help out there, those uh, that's down to one person. One person doing all that, we're housing in Iasko County, our contract comes up at the end of the year. Um and I understand they've already been rambling down there a little bit about what we're paying, and rightfully so, we get a great agreement with them. Uh we've paid bottom dollar for ten inmates and quite honestly, we've been running twenty inmates down there. And we're paying a little extra each quarter, which is part of the agreement and we should be. Uh but we're also paying a very low rate compared to everybody else, so if we don't see that build double by next year, I'd be very surprised. And if it wasn't a little bit more than double, I'd be surprised, uh so that begs the question, is it time to start looking at reopening the jail? And uh I, I think we need to do a study into it, do some research into looking into it and, and just see where we're at. Uh twenty beds, that's two thirds of the jail full. The, the environment statewide and nationally is a lot more of uh, of pro law enforcement and pro incarceration and pro prosecution. I, I think that the tide has changed a little bit, where five years ago, when we closed up, it wasn't, you know, nobody wanted, you know, we had George flight that just happened. Um there was bond reform, there was jail reform, there was criminal justice reform, and all of those were in favor of defendants. And, and I think there's a lot of pushback right now, especially the state house representatives, maybe not. And all of those were in favor of the defendants, and and I think there's a lot of pushback right now, especially the state House of Representatives, maybe not so much in our state senate. To start pushing back and start looking out for our victims and locking people up. And that's that's really where it's at, I think there's gonna be that turn, uh, the turn is already, it's already happened a little bit. When I'm looking down there seeing that we have twenty inmates in there, when I said we're gonna have ten, I think that's already, that's already moving in that direction. So two thirds full, um, I don't think the jail is ever gonna break even, it's ever gonna make money, uh, but it's gonna get closer, it's gonna get closer to being worthwhile for us to do that. So I think we can start looking at some things like that and see where we're at, see how close we are to doing that, being feasible. The big question is, you know, is that facility, are they able to reopen back up? Yeah, we're we're gonna open up tomorrow, I just have to move some junk out the back door. Realize, so I cut the front of the jail open and ready to go since day one. And we've used it, we haven't used it every day and we haven't used it frequently, but we use the jail cells up there. The back would be a little bit more difficult, take a little more time, cause I have property in there. And the other biggest question is, are we gonna find people, be able to find people to employ as corrections officers? It's uh, it's a tough job, it's it's really is God's work to work in a jail where people, everybody's meant to be there, uh, and to have to come in and wear nice holidays and weekends for. You know, moderately decent pay, it's tough to find people, and we still have that job for our, so my biggest fear would be staffing that. It always was when we were open, we were always one resignation away from a crisis in that jail, uh, staffing wise and overtime wise, so. That that would be my concern coming forward, are you gonna do this by yourself? Yeah, yeah, and and my my challenge and all of these these concerns that I have is is, you know, you can step up and come over and talk to me and we'll talk, you know. If you wanna take one or two topics each, or or however you guys wanna work it out, then we'll work on them together, but um, yeah, I'll, I could certainly do the study as far as. As the finances, the money, uh, the feasibility go for doing that. And it really is no, I really don't wanna express any discontent with Iosco County, they have treated us very, very well, taken good care of us, taken good care of our inmates. They take very good care of our court staff, my staff as far as getting people there, they get us in and out very quickly, so we can get back up here. Honestly, I I do not like leaving one deputy in Altuna County when I send it in, uh, a prisoner down by Iosco with the second deputy. It's not, it's not safe, quite honestly, I'm lucky I haven't been reading this on that, yeah, but they've been flexible with me on that. So yeah, I'd be glad to, but but any any one of these things, you know, if anybody's willing to step step up and come over and work with me on them, um, and talk about some of the concerns I have. They're not all fixable, and but but some of we just need to talk about some of these stuff, people can down the road so much. That they get carried away on, so the bottom one, you know, stands right out, and that's MSU Extension Building, we gotta figure out something to do there pretty soon. You know, I can, I can store my stuff outside, it's not gonna be done in the world, put my stuff outside, put a place, park over it, but. You know, are we gonna fix it, are we gonna keep that agreement going, or are we just gonna move on, you know, that's up to you guys. Either way, I'll survive, but uh, that's something, we gotta figure out courthouse security, where we're heading with that. I have the medical examiner's office down here, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you, I put that down because I think that's a positive, we talked a little bit about the. The opioid money and those tablets earlier, but I I really think the medical examiner's office will put some effort into that, and and things have come around quite a bit. I think that's looking better, but that's one of those things for a few years, got kicked down the road, um, I'm pleasantly pleased by that. Animal control, we have some work to do in that area, I think they were in a meeting or two ago and spoke to. And uh, obviously, the hunting needs to be addressed sometimes, so. That's kinda what I have for the day. Is that enough?
Scott, what would you say are the three by major reasons that we. Are struggling so with, um, deputies and sergeants? It was payroll.
During our budget. It's budget approval from from this board. So the the really, the the only, I have had anybody leave in several years. It's it's been almost five years since I've had somebody leave, we've been, we've been pretty solid, so I I I'm waiting for the budget approval. To do that, and that's the that's the constraint that the board holds on the sheriff is 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 the budget, and the budget controls staffing levels, so. That's that's really, that's really my only.
So can I transpose what you just said into saying, if we were to say. We've got money for two more, how long would it enter the double position?
Good question, if I was able to find somebody that was already certifiable or ready to go right now, um, it would take a couple of weeks of of field training to get. To get into that position, if they were not certifiable, which they have a reimbursement program through the state of Michigan to reimburse us for costs associated with sending them to a police academy. That would take uh, probably a month or so of the hiring process, four months in the police academy, uh, so we're talking about six months. And then to be in an F T O program, the the average is if you hire somebody off the street to do that, which is which is the next, leads into a very, very good question next. To do that, you're about a year, start to finish. The grant does not allow me to do that from somebody off the street, they have to work for me. So they can be a marine, they can be a secretary, they can be a corrections officer, they can be any of those positions, but they have to be an employee of the sheriff's office to be able to sign up for the police academy. The grant's pretty neat, I I've uh, you know, advocated for pretty heavily yesterday at the state. It doesn't reimburse all the costs associated with it, but it does, up to twenty thousand dollars worth of tuition expenses and pay. So you know, they they're paid as an employee when they go to the police academy, and and that that covers a good majority of it, not all, of course. It's a neat program, I I I've I've talked to several people about it before, they have to be damn special, you know, to get that blessing, because the uh. The attrition rate for them isn't great, uh, especially when you're hiring people off the street with very little experience. When you bring them in and put them as a corrections officer for a couple of weeks and send them to the police academy, they get there and decide they don't like it at some point, either during the academy. Or they fail the academy, or they get injured during the academy, or they come back and just go, you know what, I'm gonna work at a barge or collab. It pays better and I don't have to deal with this, so so the attrition, yeah, the attrition for those is a little bit lower. It's better for people who have worked in corrections for a while and been around and and are interested in improving their career in law person as mu- much as I did. And it also works a little better with older folks, so we're having twenty year olds that we're sending to the police academy and they're getting back at twenty one years old and we're sending them out. The attrition rate's pretty high, they 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 don't work on as well. You know, fortunately, the the position that I'm in right now, I've watched and seen what's worked at other places and must be very closely to see, and um. Yeah, mixed success, I guess, so for for me to do that, for me for me to stand out there and say we're a sensitive police academy. And extend this and they put the effort in, they're gonna have to be pretty darn special. And I'd have to be confident we're gonna make it.
They don't realize, they just don't recognize all the elements that are happening.
So they still have a little experience, you know, maybe they have a little experience, you want to go out there and handle everybody else's life experience and give them advice. Still have it. Okay, who else? What's that? Thank you.
Oh, round of three reports.
They didn't have a lot going on. I was gonna talk about, um, I talked to Dave Hanson, he's gonna look and see what it costs to have a backup generator. At least on our furnace. He's gonna get an electrical contractor in just to see like that, get a transfer switch. I mean, he likes that whole building, but I I think just to have just the furnace. Cause the power goes off for three or four days in January, and we have no way to run that furnace. We could be in serious trouble now, I don't think that's gonna be a huge cost, considering the like, the whole building, I I know. So, as as I was talking with him about that, um, he's gonna find out, so in the coming days. We're gonna, he'll come back with us with kinda some costs, what we have to think. So that's about it.
Um, I attended a T A meeting out of the, you know. War and they passed it on, which is always a good thing, seem to have a good balance and you know all their. EMS guy, I attended their meeting. They kind of announcing they're getting a budget cut. Just how much. There was rumors that came down from the Fed that they were going to shut the program completely down. That was a rumor, and now with the budget coming in and what's recommended, but. It's not quite. I did attend also a re-taught vote here, lieutenant. Alpina, I'm assuming that's being taken care of, but Alpina had left it out of their budget.
Yeah, leave kind of the budget.
You wanted to, yes, okay. I I have to remove sheriff, we're gonna see some problem with that. I'm not sure just what they're maneuvering, state police has a lot to say about that. You know, our agreements and everything, it's gonna be really interesting. The other thing, uh, I'd like to just mention, I don't know, go into panic mode or anything, but this contract with the. I've been approached by some Iosco County commissioners, just giving, let's say, a heads up. That they've already increased to this. Just for information.
My mouth's there to talk to my brain, it's gonna stop.
We'll, we'll talk afterwards, how's that sound?
Yeah, good, Carolyn.
I had a sudden meeting in Gaylord's Monday. Pretty much routine, substance abuse disorder. Been busy with Sunrise, nine one one authority, two one one is taking a lot of time. We had an archive presentation a week ago Tuesday at the EMS building and.
Your packet, your root for leisure.
One thing from Michigan Works, they're having their, I don't know, I will get up here, cause I can't seem finding, having their school thing. Where all the schools go in for. Employment campaigns, uh, that's.
Job fair.
Job fair, schools there, um, it's something that you can go and get a tour of, if you want to, uh, it's. May twentieth, no, May, yeah, May fifteenth, I believe. And you just go to the front gate or front door and they will give you a tour, okay? It's kind of closed off just for the students only, so there's a little bit of tech in there for that. But you can get to it.
Scott, what's that?
When I gave my presentation earlier, it was a mess, there's a grand agreement contract that goes with this application. And it requires your signature.
This is a generator grant?
Yeah, the generator.
Stephanie, do we need to go around the police finals?
Um, you usually do. I'll move it, we authorize the care of a signed B.
Block, it's a block grant, it's uh, whatever the C D, community development block grant through M E D C.
That, rules court, any discussion?
Who was the second? Johnston.
Yes.
Small. Brady.
Yes.
Brumman.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.